Commissioner Cox?
Here.
Commissioner Graven?
Here.
Commissioner Phipps?
Here.
Mayor Hall?
Here.
I'm gonna make a motion to move to allow Commissioner Cox to attend the meeting remotely.
Commissioner Clausen.
Excuse me. Commissioner Clausen to attend. You're kind of remote.
I'm a mobile type guy.
Let's start all over again. I move to allow Commissioner Clausen to attend the meeting due to health reasons. And can I have a second on that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Commissioner Phipps and roll call.
Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
Commissioner Graven?
Yes, or here.
It's red. Commissioner Phipps?
We do that one. Uh, yes.
Mayor Hall?
Yes.
Now he can attend.
Okay, now.
He is trying to get to the access password, so.
So.
You just, you can, well, once he's on, then go ahead or just, yeah.
Well, uh, yeah, there's nothing. He'll, he'll get on here.
Yep.
All right, consent agenda. Items listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will occur unless a council member requests the item to be removed from the consent agenda. If an item is removed from the consent agenda, it will be considered elsewhere on the agenda for this meeting. Prior to asking for a motion to approve the consent agenda, the mayor will ask for anyone who desires to remove an item from the consent agenda for public discussion. Is there anybody that would like to move, remove an item from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting on November 21st, 2023, and bills and payroll for the last half of November 2023. Can I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Any, uh, we just, roll call.
Yeah.
Is he on?
He already.
Sam, I know you have.
Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
Commissioner Graven?
Yes.
Commissioner Phipps?
Yes.
He's not on.
Commissioner Clausen? Yep, we'll just put him in absent still. Mayor Hall?
Yes.
Presentations, petitions, and communications. This portion of the city council meeting is reserved for persons who desire to address the council. The Illinois Open Meetings Act mandates that the city council may not take action on comments received on matters that have not been identified on this agenda, but the council may direct staff to address the topic or refer the matter for action on the agenda for another meeting. Persons addressing the council are requested to limit their presentation to three minutes and avoid repetitious comments. We would also ask you state your name and address for the record as well as stand when speaking. Would anybody like to address the council? Anybody remotely like to address the council?
Not remotely, but Commissioner Clausen is on the mobile phone here.
So we'll try to speak up to allow him to hear us.
Right. You really want to turn it down.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, that's a key word, let's go.
Okay.
Okay, just so you know, we hear everything you're saying. Okay, so, we're, we're, do business.
This was hard, let's deny it, you guys, but be good, so. All right.
So, are you ready?
Yeah, go ahead.
I make a motion to adopt special ordinance number 2023-1880, levying taxes for all corporate purposes for the fiscal year beginning May 1, 2023, and ending April 30th, 2024.
Can we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Commissioner Cox, any discussion on this item?
I have sort of a summary sheet. Um, the levy, the portion compares the 2023 levy to 2022. Uh, the extension after PTA was an estimate, um, as is the tax rate, uh, looking at increase, total increase of about $230,000 over the 2022 range, an estimated rate of 2.31148. In total section, when that rate is applied to a home worth $100,000, with the home set exemption, and shows an annual increase of $27.46 where the city's portion of the property tax. And then at the bottom, I've summarized the pension contributions, and I'm starting with the statutory minimum, a total of roughly $4.8 million. Then the recommended amount is roughly $5.6 million in total. And what we're projected to contribute between the tax levy and personal property taxation tax is about $5.9 million in total between the two pension funds.
Okay. Anybody, anybody else have any comments or questions?
So, Beth, just clarify for me here, I guess. So, we're, we're looking at projecting, we're projecting contributions to pensions of 5.9 million, and revenue in terms of property taxes is at five point, say 5.3? Am I saying that right?
Three. If you look down below in the total column, the PPRT is estimated at 1.11, 1.29, and the tax levy portion of the pension contribution. So there are two, two sources of contributions. Uh, the personal property taxation tax that comes is shared revenue from the state.
Okay.
30% to the library, and the balance is split between the place and fire pension. So, of the, the 5.3, 4.7 is going to pensions, and the remainder will be going to the permanent type of letter.
Gotcha, okay. And then for the individual that is asking, wondering, hearing things that are difficult to understand, I mean, it's very complicated, right? Um, so, again, just to reiterate what you have here, the $100,000 home, here in Mattoon, you're looking at a property tax increase over last year of about $27.
For the, the city's portion of that?
Correct, yes. Not, not the total bill, but for the city's portion, which is the only thing we can control, is $27. Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments? If not, roll call.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
Commissioner Graven?
Yes.
Commissioner Phipps?
Yes.
Mayor Hall?
Yes.
A motion to adopt resolution number 2023-3267 approving a grant agreement between the State of Illinois Department of Transportation, economic development program in the amount of $2 million for roadway improvements in the Emerald Lakers Sports Complex, authorizing four and a half million from revenue bond proceeds and other non-MFT funds for the construction of the roadway improvements for the Emerald Bakers Sports Complex, and authorizing the mayor to sign the joint funding agreement for construction work.
Can I have a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Commissioner Graven, and then anybody have any comments?
I, I'll just say that on the, uh, the comments that I've made to each of you, that there is agreements that will be put together with Sarah Bush and sports facilities on the job creation that is required for this. So, we will be working on that to get an agreement to make sure that they create those jobs or help pay back the, the grant.
Right.
So.
I, I would also like to comment that, uh, in this motion, it talks about $4.5 million from revenue bond proceeds. Those are not revenue bonds of the city. Those are revenue bonds from the not-for-profit, uh, sports complex. Uh, okay, anybody, have any comments, questions?
I would say that, uh, you know, excuse me, uh, we were the first group to ever receive this in the state. So, that's pretty significant that we were able to receive that, and it's great news for Mattoon.
Absolutely. Good job, everybody directly involved with that. Okay, now we all do roll call.
Commissioner Graven?
Yes.
Commissioner Phipps?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
Mayor Hall?
Yes.
I move to adopt special ordinance number 2023-1881 approving the waiver of building permit, mechanical permit, plumbing permit, and electrical permit fees for non-renewed residential homes being constructed within the city of Mattoon to be reviewed every two years. Can I have a second to that motion?
Second.
And anybody have any comments about this?
I do.
Yes.
Um, I struggle with this for a couple of reasons. You're wanting to take revenue away. You were not here, nor was Commissioner Clausen or Phipps, when we were struggling to find revenue when we were $700,000 in the hole. Who are we gonna cut? What are we gonna do? Um, I know it doesn't sound like a lot of money, but even $8,000 in permit fees, that's two persons raises per year. Um, the other thing I have a problem here is that it's an automatic renewal in this ordinance rather than, uh, when you and I talked, it was to be, um, basically expire after two years. Um, plus the fact that effective January 1, 2024, new residential construction will be required to install, uh, EV, um, you know, uh, capabilities, which I think is going to be a detriment to residential, uh, construction anyway. So I don't think that abating these permit fees are, is all that great, considering what you said, it was only like a thousand bucks for a 1,200 square foot house or whatever. So I, I struggle with that.
I would say to, to your point, you know, if that's something that's gonna be required, that's essentially a cost that, you know, would be removed from the development process that could pay for other state-handed things like the EVs. Uh, but in my mind, I mean, for the years 2021 and 2022, we made zero dollars either way, uh, in permit revenues for new residential construction. And so, you know, if we're averaging one or two homes with approximately 13 being built over the past seven years, uh, the idea is that we get this momentum going by having it as a part of a broader incentive package for housing, and then we essentially pass that resolution to end the ordinance when the momentum's there, and therefore have increased revenues.
The construction, the reason for the construction was that due to COVID and the short supply, when you're talking 250,000 or $250 to build a square foot home, so you got a hundred, or a thousand square foot home, now it used to be built for 100,000, now we're, or costing you 200,000. Um, the costs are coming down. So I would venture to say that's why we didn't have much construction at all during 2021. Um, I don't know if anybody else has any concerns about it, but with contract negotiations and basically the funding out there drying up from COVID, we're not gonna be very far to where we were two or three years ago in trying to figure out, we can't cut firemen, we sure as heck don't wanna cut policemen. So that leaves Public Works and City Hall. We're bare bones on Public Works as it is right now. So who at City Hall do you wanna cut? Two or three people when we're looking to try to save 5, 600,000 dollars to cut from the budget? So that's my concern.
Uh, just a quick comment. Uh, I certainly appreciate, uh, where Commissioner Graven's coming from, but, uh, we're doing this primarily to incentivize new residential property. We're trying to get more people to come here to live and pay additional taxes, sales taxes and property taxes. I think by far, when you look at the big picture, this is gonna generate more revenue for the city rather than less. The, the tax, the fees are insignificant almost, uh, that we collect on, on these. I would hope that we get to the point where we have so many people coming in that we will go back and start charging fees again because we don't want any more growth. But I don't know if that'll come. Um, every, every, every time we elect commissioners, uh, or new people on the council, they will always, during their term, have a chance to stop this, always. And, and they can do that every two years. So, again, I, I think this is absolutely the kind of thing that we need to do to generate more revenue for the city and not less.
And it's probably primarily targeted at these vacant lots in town that currently don't really generate significant amounts of property tax. But once those have a, you know, sizable structure on there, uh, you know, that's continued revenue for decades at that point. Um, and it's really just trying to create a more developer-friendly environment within the city of Mattoon. Uh, and again, I completely respect your, you know, viewpoint on that, and I think that there is a lot of value in that, and that's why I included, you know, that section about the resolution to just, council can end it at any time if we feel like it's not working out.
Why did, why did you put in automatic renewal? Cause when you and I talked, it was not, it was just gonna be basically a two-year trial period.
Yeah.
And then when the ordinance took command, I mean, I'd be more inclined to try it for one year to see where we get with it, but not an automatic renewal in there. Because it slipped through the cracks very easily to come up for in two years, it just goes on.
That, that's a fair point. I mean, we could.
Can probably verify that at one point in time, you guys were counting paper clips, trying to figure out how to cut the budget.
Okay. Uh, I'd say to that point, I mean, we could potentially amend that section of it if you'd like. Um, but again, I mean, it's, it's pretty clearly spelled out in the ordinance that at any time it could be revoked by council. Um, and if we're, again, looking at 2021, 2022, zero dollars in permit fees despite having a few homes built that were primarily by nonprofits. And the only reason why the residential development for this year is so high is because we have that 25-unit complex coming in, uh, for the folks that have disabilities out there. Uh, so, you know, really, if the majority of housing construction right now is be, is being created by nonprofits, we're already not collecting those fees anyways.
Well, I, I, I start, I mean, you can't really compare 21 and 22 to anything, because 20, 21, and 22, well, most of 22 are years that we've never, in my lifetime, I've never seen. I never would have thought we would have gone through what we went through. So I don't know how you can really compare that. I don't disagree.
Yeah.
That with the sports facility and trying to get people into Mattoon and so forth, but in the scheme of things, if I'm building a house, a thousand bucks is not that big of a deal. Cause they pass, I know that these contractors pass that right on to the, to the homeowner or whoever's building the house.
Yeah, and, and again, this is just a smaller piece for us to remain competitive and kind of showcase to developers that we are more friendly towards development. Um, you know, and compared to, you know, other cities, I just feel that it makes us just slightly more competitive in the region by offering this. Uh, on the, I'm not sure if this was included in the, out there, okay?
Yeah.
Um, but you know, you look at 2017, which is pre-COVID, not even $2,000 was collected that year. Uh, so it looks like on average, pre-COVID stuff was around, you know, uh, for 2018, a little over 4,000, 2019, a little over $3,000. Um, so, I mean, you know, take that as you will. Again, I definitely respect your opinion on that. Um, but I just feel that this is something that's gonna make us a little more competitive for a short amount of time, and because it's provisional in nature, anytime the city feels that it's not working out, we can always go back and revisit that.
Alex, this says anytime after that two-year period. So this has to be in place for two years, correct?
No, uh, so the next section in there says at any time. So basically, the second council meeting in December, I believe, of, I don't have the ordinance right here, but of '25, uh, is when that would be scheduled for the agenda, for council to revisit that. Uh, but if, let's say, six months into it, we have, you know, 200 new homes being built as part of the sports complex, we probably wanna collect that, so.
Do you have an estimate on how many houses? I mean, there wasn't, obviously, there's no demand in the last seven years. We didn't have a lot of, I mean, we had a lot of good stuff going, but we didn't have a sports complex. Do you anticipate what that demand's gonna be over the next two years, three years, five years?
I think as we go through the process with IDA for the community revitalization studies, uh, they're gonna do a market analysis of our entire community, what our current housing stock looks like. Uh, and then from there, maybe we could ask them to produce an analysis like that, just a couple projections. Uh, but I don't currently have access to that.
And this doesn't include, this is just for residential housing, it's not for someone putting a garage up.
Yeah, correct. Not just new homes.
So no waiver if they put a garage up and then they decide to put a living quarters and say, no, this is a separate residence for a mother-in-law's quarters?
No.
Nothing like that. Thank you.
And those are technically illegal, right?
For now, right?
Yeah.
But, but to your point, this is, this is part of the process. We, we've talked for some time now that we have a shortage of housing, a shortage of, of that, that price point, entry-level housing. And a lot of focus has been put on what is needed and how do we get there and how do we fulfill that need? And this is just part of that, that process.
This is literally the second step in that process.
And, and that's gonna continue to build, and so we have to give it a little bit of time to see if not only this piece of the puzzle, but the other pieces as well come together and continues to, to use your words, build that momentum and fill that, that void and get more property on the, on the tax rolls, and eventually have a, have a short to long-term plan of surpassing this, the, the revenue that we've, uh, that we've accumulated in the past, that we've collected in the past.
Yeah, my goal in the next probably five to 10 years is for this to not exist, uh, at that point, and then we have consistent revenues from permits.
Yeah.
Any other comments, questions?
Just have another question. Are, are there any other municipalities that don't?
Yeah, just a minute.
That are waiving these?
Yeah, as I understand it, Charleston has a moratorium on them right now. Uh, and then in terms of larger cities, I mean, there's quite a few in California, a few in the Massachusetts area that I'm aware of. Uh, I could get a larger list if you'd like.
I was just curious of the area, primarily this area. Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Cox, you have a question or comment?
I'd like to see you after the meeting.
Um, I just think the way the ordinance is read, I think it's, uh, kind of a bit of a standard, which are good. I think it's also for term with future councils, as you, as Alex talked about, being able to rescind it. And I also think that, I think in the next year or so, once the sports and entertainment complexes have been going, uh, we're drawing people to the lift facility, all the, all the tourism events, I think that's just gonna really start catching some eyes with people as a destination of somewhere to live. So I think this will just add and make it, uh, make the process a little simpler, and I hope also helps the builders. But again, I, I, I don't think it's a big risk for the next, uh, one or two years. And obviously, at some point, if we as a council or a new council wants to rescind, we can. Thank you.
Okay. Any other, any other questions, comments? All right, roll call.
Oh, let's see, Commissioner Graven?
No.
Commissioner Phipps?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
Mayor Hall?
Yes.
Uh, make a motion to adopt special ordinance 2023-1882, authorizing the mayor to sign an outright agreement or grant agreement by and between the city of Mattoon and Brad Eaton and April Eaton, reimbursing up to $80,000, excuse me, from midtown TIF revenues over a two-year period for demolition and facade improvements to the property and building located at 213 North 14th Street, and authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement.
Second to that motion?
I'll second, Mayor.
Commissioner Phipps, and any comments or questions here?
Do you have a quick question? In the agreement, it indicates demolition?
Yeah.
So what are they planning on?
There's a tall two-section kind of area there on the north side of the building. Uh, that was the old elevator, grain elevator, that could be demolishing that section of it off of the building.
Gotcha, okay.
It'd just be a regular rectangle building now.
It was just kinda confusing the way it was written. I'm thinking, okay, they demo in it or they revoked, what are they doing to it?
Just, just the dock area where the, yeah, the old elevator was, grain elevator, yep.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, roll call.
Commissioner Phipps?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen? Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
Commissioner Graven?
Yes.
Mayor Hall?
Yes.
On motion number five, um, I know Toby's here, I'd like to table this one because according to the Secretary of State's office, JM2 LLC is not in good standing. Therefore, I don't feel that the city has the ability to issue revenue funds to an LLC that's not in good standings with the state of Illinois.
I have this right there. They actually reached out to me today and said that, uh, I have to be, I said, hey, make sure you're in good standing, and they did notice that it had paid, I have to.
Did I see the?
Yeah.
Receipt that shows it's been paid?
All right. I adopts, or make a motion to adopt special ordinance 2023-1883, authorizing the mayor to sign an outright grant agreement and buy in between the city of Mattoon and JM2 LLC series, Mattoon rentals reimbursing up to $31,000, $515,90 from midtown TIF revenues over a two-year period for rip repairs and facade improvements to the property and building located at 4211 Lakeland Boulevard, and authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement.
Any comments or questions on this motion?
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry, second?
I, I noticed this morning that that said midtown TIF, it's actually South Route 45.
I've, yeah.
Business district.
We'll make a change on that.
Yes.
We're waiting for the change. So do we need, you're just changing that, right, aren't you?
Yeah, I'll change it to the South Route 45 TIF.
Business district.
Business district.
It's changed now. Thank you.
Okay.
Did you get a second on that?
I did, yeah.
One second, Mayor. Commissioner Cox, and now any comments or questions?
Yeah, we did have this before the TIF and Business District Committee, um, looked at it. Uh, it's one of those out there that has been out there a while, it's not been used, uh, most recently. Uh, the last thing that was in there was Mattoon Heating and Air Conditioning. It is needing some, some, uh, roof work, some siding work to make it look good. Hopefully they'll get it leased out and, um, have some more, you know, if it's a retailer or something out there, then we'll have some more sales tax out there. If not, you know, if it's a business, that, uh, hopefully, um, we just, you know, see some more development out in that area or at least more action out in that area to help clean up that, that intersection out there.
Any other questions? Okay, roll call.
Mr. Clausen?
Yes.
Richard Cox?
Yes.
Commissioner Graven?
Yes.
Commissioner Phipps?
Yes.
Mayor Hall?
Yes.
I move to adopt special ordinance number 2023-1884, approving a variance to the yard setback requirements for property located at 3008 Richmond Avenue for the purposes of installing a carport. Can I get a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Commissioner Graven, and, uh, any comments anybody has?
Uh, really, yeah, really, essentially, um, this is just a pretty simple variance in terms of side yard setbacks. So typically for an accessory structure like a carport, um, you know, you're talking three-foot setback for that, uh, but due to how, uh, Mr. Collins's, uh, garage is created, uh, or was originally made, it's right on the property line there and grandfathered in, and so it doesn't make any sense to put it not next to the property line there, within that three-foot setback, because then it would prevent the vehicle from exiting the building. Uh, there were no objectors present. There's been a public hearing. Uh, you know, it's, uh, city staff recommends that a council approves it. Uh, it was also recommended by the planning commission, so pretty straightforward in my opinion. Uh, but happy to take any questions.
You know, one, one other thing was, you know, a lot of the old setbacks were for fire protection and stuff, that fire didn't spread. Again, this is an all-metal building, so it's not gonna catch on fire. It may melt if, if the garage behind it's on fire, it may, you know, warp and melt down, but it's not going to help spread any kind of fire, so.
Okay. Any other questions? Roll call.
Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
Commissioner Graven?
Yes.
Commissioner Phipps?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Mayor Hall?
Yes.
Motion to increase Council's district plus 2023, thirty. They think formal bidding requires a three-figure price. Contour technologies, the amount of $29,280 for 32 replaced bulbs in the ultraviolet dissection, disinfection system acting water treatment plant.
Can I have a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Commissioner Cox, and any comments on this?
I provided, uh, an explanation of, um, you know, the process of the waste water plant, what these, uh, vultures for, just say I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody has.
Okay. Anybody questions? Real call, please.
Mr. Raven?
Yes.
Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
Mr. Clausen?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mayor Hall?
Yes. I move to a council, to approve council decision request 2023-2431, ratifying the appointment of Mike Roy and Bill Olson with unexpired terms of 12/31/2026 and 12/31/2025 respectively, and reappointments of Carolyn Floyd and Dan Lawrence to the Public Work Advisory Board with terms expiring on 12/31/2026. Can I have a second to that motion?
I'll second it, Mayor.
Commissioner Phipps, and any questions anybody has? I talked to everybody, uh, that, uh, is recommended on this. And, uh, I also took comments from other council members, uh, if they had ideas. And indeed, a couple of these are on here. And, uh, I think these, these new, particularly the new ones are excited about getting involved with some of these things. So, uh, any other questions? And real call.
Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
Mr. Clausen?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Raven?
Yes.
Mayor Hall?
Yes. Department report starting with City Administrator Kyle Deal.
Before we get into that, go ahead, Commissioner Phipps.
I need to, uh, change my vote on, uh, motion three to abstain. Can you, how, how do I affect that?
Motion three?
Yeah.
My apologies. I will let that.
Three, you want to change it to abstain?
Yes, yes. Thank you. Thank you.
Got moving too fast after all the discussions.
That's what the permits, right?
Yes.
Okay, uh, so the administrator report, basically, uh, been working on getting stuff put together for starting new union negotiations, uh, been working on some interviews for some upcoming vacancies. Just been a lot of little ordinance stuff. Uh, we have, uh, a couple of projects that I'm working on that will be on the next council meeting, which is an equal opportunity employment plan. And, um, hopefully some personnel policy changes that address the, um, paid leave for part-time employees that becomes affected in January. So, uh, working on several little different items and just being plenty busy, so. I'll open it up for any questions for me.
Okay. Hearing done. City Attorney Dan Jones.
Uh, business as usual for me. There's a Tim Quackenbush compliance hearing next week. I'll report on that next committee meeting or next council meeting. Uh, also hope to have some more information on the brown shoe next meeting. Thanks.
Okay. Any questions? City Clerk Susan O'Brien?
Um, pretty much business as usual. That's all.
Any questions? Susan, Finance Beth Wright?
I was just not good in the council packets. There is the final payment, number 24, meaning refunding bonds. Um, there was an IUPA loan in tour funds that was refunded in 2014. That's paid off December 15th opportunity. We divided that some dollars, which is fine. Major sources of revenue, um, general fund. Um, to date, we're shorted $20,000 ahead of where we were a year ago. Property taxes ahead, sales taxes ahead, telecommunications taxes ahead, uh, utility taxes behind, income taxes behind, video gaming taxes behind, use taxes behind, and personal property tax behind. The unrestricted cash in the general fund today, $11.6 million. And that was 13 million last meeting. Um, 11.55 with the meeting before that, so it's holding steady. Um, working on the fiscal plan by budget and putting together a six-month projection. Um, so we can, I'm going to feel for where we're at in the fiscal 24. And there's been promised a final audit report this week from the others. I'm sure that, that's all I have.
Okay. Any questions? All right, we'll go with Public Works, Dean Barber.
We have, uh, three projects, um, ready to go out to bidders for that theater. It is a sidewalk project, uh, rural school, unless you're having any safe route to the school grant. Um, that was originally submitted IDIOT October. I got comments back this week. Um, I'll have plans, um, return to IDIOT this week. And then they will process them and it'll be bid on estate letting. IDIOT will be bidding the work out by March, the eighth of next year for, for construction next summer. We also have two projects at the waste water plant, um, replacing two, uh, file pumps, and some rehabbed one of our primary clarifiers. And both of those projects have gone to bid, go to bidders late this month. The bid openings will be in January, um, but good for us. That's all I have. Just any question?
Any questions anybody has? Okay, uh, Chief Hillgas, Fire Department.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, since the last meeting, the guys have answered 135 calls for, uh, service inspectors. Uh, done four inspections. Uh, they've also done RIT training and their ARF training. Earlier this week on Monday, uh, two years ago, I had a couple of salesmen come in and I was this close to just letting them sit down there, but I went down and listened to their spiel. And the product that they are coming up with is going to change the accountability in the fire service dramatically. And I, I got on board early with them and we are part of, we are a, the first department to, to have this new technology to pilot, um, which is, which is pretty exciting. But, uh, one, once we get into some training, I'll, I'll show you what it does. It's basically almost like it's a cell phone that they'll wear. And as they're going through, it's mapping what that phone's seeing on a tablet that I'll have out front. And I'll be able to see where in that structure these guys are. And it starts putting the wall, where they turned the doorway. It's, it's pretty cutting-edge technology. So we're going to be doing a lot of training with that and I'm excited to see, um, just Mattoon's name up there as being, you know, one of the first fire departments to, to jump on board with this. So, uh, pretty exciting even for me not being a tech guy, so. Late, or the middle of last week, um, I got the quote back from, uh, for the fire truck. And it was a little bit higher than what I had told you about. I thought it was going to be somewhere around the $720,000 range. Um, and it came in at $762,621. So I chose not to have it on the agenda tonight because I wanted to go through and start looking at wants versus needs and trying to get that price brought down. Um, and I have got it down to currently $739,639. The, an exact truck just like this, our base price on this truck was $663,906. Another, a twin to this one with a different motor is coming in in January. And it's, it's bare bones price is going to be $787,222. The, the price markups are just staggering. It blows my mind.
And that's an optional separate engine? That's the, that's the, the engine that is now available or mandated by new requirements?
Yes, that is correct. So we are getting that last, what? A lot of people are saying the last of the good motors, i- if we, you know, go with, with this truck. So, um, I've also been looking at financing. Um, I've talked to several banks, leasing, uh, companies. And I would just like to go on the record that I am not a banker. And I have learned a lot through this process. But I think working with Kyle and Beth, um, they've got probably by far the best plan to move forward with financing on this. The cheapest interest rate that I have been able to, uh, get is five and a quarter percent, all the way up to 7.9%. So, um, Beth and Kyle's option is by far the best. So that will be what I will be bringing to the council next meeting. I didn't want to try to rush things and not do my due diligence, uh, trying to get us the best product for the cheapest price. So that's why it's not on this agenda.
And, and the options he's talking about is, you know, we've discussed possibly with the revolving loan fund, borrowing from the revolving loan fund and paying back on a 3% rate. So.
That was all I had, Mayor, unless anybody has any questions.
All right, Mattoon PD, Chief Gaines?
I've had a call on it. We got a new bro usually. Now we had 633 calls for service in the last two weeks, 36 arrests. Uh, pretty slow place right now. Everybody's off work cunning. We're bare bones minimum and a bunch of stick running through the PD too. So I hope everyone starts to knock that off real quick. The overtime's kind of been eaten up, so. It's all up to the report.
Okay, any questions? Arts and tourism, Angelia?
Um, they just have more things to share. I, I think that, I'm, I'm working on 20, um, 2024 calendars, festival fest and summer activities in the midst of things. But, um, the most exciting thing happening, of course, is lightworks. I, I wanted to share this with you. This is, um, this is our standard brochure. I know most all of them probably either been out there or did at this point. Um, but the brochure is significant for a couple of reasons. First of all, um, all the sponsors would barely fit on this page. But the cool thing is that we've had to increase the size of our brochure twice now in the last couple of years because you can't fit them all on one page. Um, so this continues to be the main thing that, that how many people want to be involved. And we have, we have nine new, um, displays this year, 17 new sponsors. And we have about 30 folks at last count on the waiting list for next year. Um, so we'll continue to grow this, but I just wanted to show you that. Um, and also I found a typo, so I'm going to have to hand them out. But if you want one, I have one for you.
Okay, any questions for Angelia? Uh, we need to build, Alex?
Uh, Pocket Parts coming along very well downtown. I'm sure some of you might have seen some of the movement out there. Uh, it's really exciting to see that happen after nearly two years. Uh, so, you know, very exciting. Um, from there, I would recommend the council, uh, probably looking into, uh, somebody to fill Gary Bosky's spot on the planning commission. Um, you know, if you have any candidates in mind, please, uh, send them to, I believe it's the mayor that does the appointments. Um, definitely, uh, you know, losing a little bit of institutional knowledge there without Gary, but, uh, hopefully we get somebody good to fill that spot. Uh, Walmart has approached the city about getting a, uh, liquor license for package. Uh, they've estimated it's about $3 to $4 million in annual sales in their first year, uh, which is pretty significant. Uh, I think it's something that we should consider. Um, outside of that, uh, liquor ordinance revisions are almost ready to put out a draft to council. Um, I'm kind of curious just from council's perspective, you know, do we feel that there should be a public hearing involved or not with that process? Uh, just to get residents input, things like that. Um, and would the city council or the planning commission be the better forum for that? Just kind of curious, uh, just moving forward before I officially submit those revisions.
You know, um, some of the council members may want to comment.
Absolutely.
They also, they have some time in the next, I mean, you want to get something back soon, but, uh, they can contact you directly, they can send you an email, whatever, right?
Absolutely, yeah. Anytime. Uh, we're hoping at some point early next year, maybe February, to have the ordinance pass. Uh, but, you know, we definitely need that input. And I, I think it's a good idea to have a public hearing, uh, but kind of curious from council's perspective. So please feel free to reach out. Um, outside of that, uh, the housing ordinance revisions, we'll have a public hearing on January 23rd. So invite all of you to attend that planning meeting. Um, and, uh, outside of that, good conversations with the land bank and, uh, that's pretty much all I got.
Quick question on the liquor ordinance. You plan on giving us a draft before?
Yeah, that, that's what I was saying, absolutely. Like, like, and so the idea is hopefully to help out with the Walmart situation. They'd like to see, uh, a little movement on that earlier in the year because it would allow them to start coordinating with corporate, uh, to be able to, you know, really move as quickly as possible to get something like that installed before the sports complex comes to town and officially opens.
So what, you're, you're talking like a drive-up for the packaged liquor at Walmart, right?
Not a drive-up, no.
What are you talking then? I mean?
It would be like, uh, basically a private space within the store, uh, that, no vehicles.
Up front, they've had, they've had, uh, banks and McDonald's and, well, you know, it's them back. But, you know, uh, photo photography space, they, you know, eye blast.
Yeah.
Effingham has one, has the same thing, but right up front, it's a, it's just a packaged liquor store right in the very front, uh, of the building.
And it's much more secure.
Inside Walmart, but between.
Oh, okay. So, so they're not talking, looking like a drive-up or something?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, gotcha.
It's a separate area in the store.
Here and there would be, you know, there'd be no access, like, you know, they're only limited to one door.
Yeah, I've seen them before. I just, to me, packaged liquor is a drive-up liquor store. That's why I think of packaged liquor, so, uh, so just clarifying. So, yeah, that's it.
Okay. Any, any other questions? All right, let's see. Now, comments from the council. Uh, Commissioner Clausen, any comments?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, we'll put on, uh, we did the interviews. We had two sets of interviews for Dean's replacement, uh, who were really good candidates. And I also appreciate Dean, Dean is putting a binder together of, of future projects and plans. So that will, uh, bring a new person up on board and getting them up to speed on that. And then Kyle, I just want to verify the application to government county for the package sales at the marina. It's December 12th, correct? Let me deliver it.
Uh, December 12th is a meeting that we would have and yes, I would like to deliver it at that time.
Okay, then we, and there's a 30, 30, I'm going to say 30 bond that goes with that, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Any questions? Uh, Commissioner Cox?
Uh, nothing this evening. Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Raven?
Ducking. There.
Commissioner Phipps?
Um, I'll try to make it quick, but, um, Public Works is wrapping up a really good fall cleanup. Uh, they're kind of wrapping that up here while they have the somewhat decent weather and gearing up for colder, colder weather. And I really appreciate all they do. Um, also appreciate, um, gearing up for a colder, colder weather. And I really appreciate all they do. Also appreciate, of course, Commissioner Clausen talked about interviews in Public Works as well. Not only for Dean's replacement, we have some vacancies there that we're working through. And I appreciate Kyle's assistance on all of that stuff and the work he's done on it. And I also want to say, thanks, Alex. Thank Alex for his work on the, not only this zoning stuff, but also the housing projects you have. So, other than that, that's all.
Any questions? I don't have anything to report. So, let's see, next on the agenda is, I move the recessed closed session pursuant to, although I always meaning act for the purpose of discussion of the appointment compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the city or legal counsel for the, or legal, or legal counsel for the city under five ILCS slash 22C1 and collective negotiating matters between the city of Mattoon and its employees or their representatives, or deliberation concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees under five ILCS 120 to C2.
I'll second that.
And all favor, or roll call?
Um, let's see, let's just go with Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
Commissioner Graven?
Yes.
Commissioner Phipps?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Mayor Hall?
Yes. Okay, we're not going to take any action after that meeting. So you could certainly stay till we reconvene and adjourn, but that session back there may take a while. So it's entirely up to you.
By time, at this time, we are going into executive session. I'm going to pause the recording and we will turn it back on when we come back out.